We pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy, and happy. We pray for wisdom from all those who guide and govern, help this government in every situation, to know and to do the things that are right and just, the soundest of judgment, making vital decisions. We pray for peacemakers, that the holy light of God sphere never dwell in their hearts, and the barriers of fear, suspicion, and hatred may fall. Thus we pray to the Holy Father, amen. Let allegiance be the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and everlasting.
Thank you everyone.
My pleasure.
Public comment. May I wish to say something on public comment questions? Is that my right?
The name of the thing we were saying to you like quite a long time ago. It's not too painful yet.
That might not apply.
Maybe they don't want to hear. Do you hear me now?
No.
You must speak up. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak again. Before I can enter the budget, I want to make sure that everybody in the school understands my philosophy as it relates to the ambulance service. I support 100% a good quality ambulance service. Look, I'm 80 years old, I've moved it before you guys. But you got to understand, this is a small community, lack of presence, that's hard jobs. We need the Chevrolet, a lot of cat water. So with that, I just, people put together concerned citizens, well, a few people. I've been here all my life and I got kind of a pulse of communities. A lot of people upset that they give it up. But I want to just point out that these people know that. I've been here a couple of times and I've heard our ambulance service costs per capita $35, $100. We were fortunate to have some people who did some background work and did some surveys and contacted various communities. And I got to tell you, Fort Fairfield is 10x greater than $35. Based on the first budget we had, it's proposed for 2122 year. It would cost you people, for us, $332. They don't think that's a lot, but if you take a look at Kierbo, they're paying $100. You look at Prescott, it's $76. So I don't know what happened, was never involved. I don't know what degree the council was in this, I don't know how we got in this mess, but we got to get out of it. This town cannot afford that. You got to go back and go onwards and get somebody that is independent, that has some knowledge of that, try to rework this program. We need ambulance service. We're going to be fighting over this for a long time, if you don't adjust, I'll tell you that. I don't know how involved the council was in reviewing, chasing down the supporting facts that you looked at when you made your decision. I don't know, but I just got to assume that something will get by somehow, because if you look at those costs, compared to the other communities, you just, just not, so anyway. In the budget, there's a couple of things that kind of bored me. I saw a new one, I just haven't had a chance to read it, but as it worked, as related to income, come your ambulance service. One of the local week ago, it showed income this year, $257,000. I challenged that one to start with, because the young man that's here said during his discussion in his department, and he had 231 cases, he only picked up $800. So if I go back and I look at last year, you're showing $169,000 income. Why did the income keep rolling in last year, but it stopped? You got $800 on January 1st to go by 31st, five months. Now, to the new budget, you win these changes, you raise the income from the ambulance service. It's now about $408? I don't know how this is coming in. I'd like for somebody to tell me, because if you haven't got any money in the last five months, why would you get any money the rest of the seven?
Counsel, if you'd like. This is old information, these are things that we've already discussed at council meeting. Public comment period is supposed to be for new information for council, but I don't mind answering that question if you'd like me to answer it. So, we were not a full-time fire ambulance service prior to. So income that came in was rolling income that came in. We now have a billing agent who does that for us, and there is a series of processes that you have to go through, which is what we've discussed with Medicaid and Medicare, in order to be reimbursed by those entities. And we are about to get a rather large sum of money. It is in the billing process, it has been sent through W T, yes? And just as I told you last night, she grossly underestimated the amount of revenue that we would be bringing in on a monthly basis, and that's why numbers have changed for you moving forward for next year. And that is still a very conservative number on revenue. But given the amount of time that it takes for us to receive those revenues, we've kept it at a very conservative number for next fiscal year. And so that's the change in the revenue that you see. And the reason we haven't received it is because it hasn't been sent to us. But it does not mean that it was not billed, and it does not mean that it will not come to us. So in, I'll just give you, in the month of May alone, we billed $31,493.40, just in May alone. And we're waiting for all of that revenue to come into us. The only revenue we have received to date is the very first one that we put in with them in a short amount of time in August. And so for September, $20,064.10, October, $22,494.20, November, $24,580.70. This is all money we're waiting for to come back to us. $23,467.90, $30,466.50, $21,711.30, $32,138.50, $19,787.50, and then again for May, $31,493.40. So we are waiting to collect quite a bit of money, and it is coming to us. We just, again, we've been told we just need to be patient. But now that we have been awarded and allowed to bill with Medicaid and Medicare, it should be a much faster process moving forward.
Can I ask a question, Robert? Would you please tell me about the $169,000 plus last year? I didn't hear you.
We anticipated $169,000 for the revenue, is that what you're asking for?
Yes.
To be billed out as the new service?
Yeah.
But it actually is going to be more than that, that we will...
You put this figure in based on your billings?
For what gets billed out when we go on a service call.
Okay, when did we start the new ambulance service?
In August. We weren't allowed until August. We didn't get our license until August, correct me if I'm wrong.
You set it up and you're doing the process of putting things together. Did you do anything with the insurance companies in advance and you got the ready and the money? Yes, sir.
Please.
So the process of building this thing where everyone's definitely going to save it, you have implied that you're making transport services, that you implied that Medicaid and Medicare service, if we improve this ability, we improve this facility. What's approved by them, they're all going to have to be approved by all private insurance companies. They were based off of Medicaid and Medicare. That $169,000 estimate based off of pure estimation, even if there was a way, or if there was no service license, there was that. Our actual liability is far more extensive than what is in the estimate. Do we have that today? No, that would be just a little over, put a pause on cases. They have released that pause, and we will be receiving those payments shortly, just because we will be continuing on to meet your needs, not be making that happen for a long time. The reason the dollar has increased since I've been here is because now we have August to June to estimate what we can do for the left. That's why I'm going to spend a bit more, because now we actually have fast of last year's budget for the ambulance services. There was a lot of best guess going on, because there wasn't any of those services there. We're not looking for cat lads, we're looking to lead the best service we can. There are bills that are already set forward, and we can behave regardless of what we're saying here or what we approach. We're doing the best we can, collecting the most we can, for providing that service, and we should not refuse.
Would you care to comment why?
If public order, this is a public comment period, it's a question answer period, wait, a public comment alone.
Mr. Dorsey, I would encourage you to come into the town office to ask your questions and to meet with us, and we would be happy to answer those questions for you. Coming here and waiting until council meeting to do so, isn't going to move council's business forward. Council is here to conduct their business, and I'd be happy to spend the time with you to answer those questions for you.
I'd like to, because to look at eliminating the reserve accounts for the most part. No, I've already, I talked with a representative last night, they put two people on it, and said they can't find anything. But just let me hear it, the new question discussed. This just started, as I understand, the last couple, three years. Right as that, if you use the reserve accounts. I'm pretty forgetful. I've used, when I was on council before, we used reserve accounts, so it's not, it's not, it's not... What is known when we use reserve accounts is that of the individual department heads, one without military willing to make, they did it through purchase, made a purchase, no matter how big it was all, they bring it to the town manager, she brings it to the council.
Depending on the...
It depends, usually before they start a certain amount over $15,000, $15,000 on the council, well, already the department, and then they block it. When they find something that it doesn't matter about, under that $15,000, they bring it to the council and we form a... So it is a little bit? Yes, it is a little bit. That's all. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dorsey.
Chairman. My name is Gary Sirrah, I'm a resident here for 57 years, originally from here. I have a few comments to make. First of all, I want to thank the council for the amount of time we've put in on this budget. It helped our great patients, and then... I also want to thank town manager, that very good supplying me with information as I requested, and I appreciate it, thank you. Also, I want to recognize Gil and Sharon Leut, an awful lot of work representing citizens. May not agree with their findings, and that's your prerogative, I kind of like what they told me. So especially as it pertains to cross the path around on the ambulance service. It's not sustainable. Now, we've come a long way, and we need to balance the budget. Many ideas have come forth, many have been forwarded to the council, and so far, we have not reached the goal of a balanced budget.
I think that's been addressed before here, the balanced budget at the top.
Many times, yeah.
Maybe not.
Do you mind if I continue?
Well, we'd like to get on with the meeting here.
We have talked about each other tonight, that's not so, approve the budget, talk about the budget, if you don't mind. The one-time revenue, that's in this year's close bucket, is going to disappear. That might be an increase in the state allocation, it's going to be reduced or disappear. So next year, we're going to have the very same problem without that income. Lastly, the EMS budget is a killer in my mind. I know the council approved the purchase of the ambulances, we're setting up the department, we're realising. I'm questioning how much homework we've done prior to representation to the council. If Sharon and Jean Leut can find out what our costs in other communities to provide a service, how come you didn't know about that before you bought those ambulances?
They actually did, because we had representatives from Caribou and Prescott that came and spoke to the council.
We are there, we had representatives from Prescott and Caribou, the ambulance services, giving the presentation.
Why does Prescott ambulance service here?
Why?
Why? Your question.
I didn't, I didn't know why.
Well, we were dealing with Prescott earlier, right?
Right.
And they decided to pull out, that was hostile. Is there a way to contract with Prescott City, Caribou City, and take a ride on their shirt tables, and cost $100 or less to have? I implore the town health to direct the town manager to explore that option.
We have, we did, and they asked us...
You're still proposing a major, major increase in funding for that budget? And I think we could cut that substantially by going from $100 to $321, 300.
But Gary, we decided to put the citizens before children first.
Let me ask you that, Sharon. Prescott service does part of the ambulance station mostly.
Prescott.
It's a monkey job.
No, it's not.
Day after day after day, but we're glad they were there. How far away is that?
Gary, when we had the ambulance service here sitting in this building, it had taken 20 minutes to get from here to the border, or they had been towed out two or three times when they sat there finished their supper. This is what we thought, we were looking for the citizens, for financial safety, and they cannot do that when they sit down there getting awed and they not want to know.
Yes, I hear you.
I'm sorry, I think we need to, I think we're on a low in bar with this discussion.
I don't think we can afford it. And I ask you, ask the town manager to explore some options. You don't have to do it, but you can explore the options and see what options are. I would strongly recommend defending the whole EMS department, selling the ambulances and contracts with Prescott and/or Caribou for both. That's what I would recommend. And if you did your homework, tried to buy those ambulances, you will probably have great my point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. When you wait 40 minutes for the ambulance, you don't, it's not worth it. We now have a call here, and I'm there in 5 minutes, we have to sit in front of the ambulance waiting. I don't want to wait for an ambulance in Prescott. Don't tell me anything, okay?
Okay, cut over this call, let's move on, thank you. Anybody else you want to talk about, public comment? Here now, I'll move on, whole business, approve fiscal 2122 budget.
The council is solely responsible for approving the budget. In order for the council to be successful, I must present a budget that is well-planned, flexible, realistic, and clearly communicated, of which my department heads and myself have clearly done for council through this entire fiscal year 2122 budget process. Successful budgeting must account for essential, recurring expenses, savings, debt reduction planning, spending planning, and accounting for irregular expenses. An effective budget provides more than a forecast or tracking of income and expenses. We budget to stay on top of the financial trends, so we know when to take advantage of unexpected revenue and unexpected expenses, so we can react in real time to downturns in cash flow. We keep our budget flexible to help our departments stay on track. Our budget is a plan of expected incomes and expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year that must be projected within a 12-month period that does not correspond to the calendar year. Our budget is an instrument that weighs policy priorities against available public resources, specifies the ways and means of providing those public services, establishes the cost of the services, and the criteria by which these services are evaluated for efficiency and effectiveness. Our budget ensures that those services are evaluated at least once a month each fiscal year, redistributes income, provides our municipal government with a spending limitation, and provides transparency by which our municipal government may be held accountable at the end of each fiscal year with an audit. The budget is composed of our operating budget, which shows expenditures for the current period, and our capital budget, which shows the financial plans for long-term capital improvements, facilities and equipment, and estimated revenues for the upcoming fiscal year. This is the amount of total estimated revenues available for the current period, and the amount of new debt to be incurred for projects in the capital budget. There is a process that begins in November, December of the previous fiscal year by which we begin preparations for our new fiscal year budget, involving the development of expenditure estimates for departments in light of available revenues. Then we present those findings for approval and budget estimates, are then submitted to council for review and directives or modifications over a period of time and public budget hearings. The budget is expected to be then legally approved and adopted by council, who is responsible for providing the budget that provides the services. Our budget is then implemented by the town manager that works with the department heads throughout the fiscal year. At the close of the fiscal year, there is our audit. This is an evaluation of the performance of all departments and how those departments are monitored and measured throughout the fiscal year. Those indicators are evaluated at the year's end to inform and direct the budget process for the following year. There are main state statutes, and council must follow, that allows their municipal government to operate under an audited balanced budget, meaning that we must plan on ending the fiscal year with a surplus to carry forward. This ending balance, often referred to as our surplus, becomes available revenue for the next fiscal year. I monitor departmental performance throughout the fiscal year and use those findings to determine efficiency, that then directs and informs the budget process for the following fiscal year. And taking a realistic, transparent approach to both short-term and structural progress goes a long way in implementing what has been neglected for over 20 years. I have combined best practice budgeting techniques and created a long-term outlook that over the time period of two and a half years, has created a substantial decision framework to manage through and emerged from the crisis that was created by the closing of re-energy, the state required total town revow, and the pandemic. Budgets, by definition, are future-looking documents. More than a year in advance, I have to estimate if the federal, state, and local economies will grow, how much we will bring in in taxes, what taxes we will be directed to pay from the county and the school district, and then determine what the cost of the services to be provided for our citizens will be. I have done this for council for the fiscal year 2122 proposed budget. We are only asking for a 1.1% increase overall. 1% of that is devoted on increase for COLA by the council. Social Security COLA for 2021 was 1.3%, and the adjustment for 2022 could be as high as 5.3%. That is, we have a decrease of $24,614 less in expenditures from fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2122. If council were to cut any further from this fiscal year 2122 budget, it will come at a cost of eliminating services. The total amount in monies that differs from last year is a minimal increase of $156,286 total. This puts us at an asking deficit of $331,930, which is only $65,282 more in total from fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2122. If we were just keeping up with the traditional 3% increase to match cost of living increases, we would be at $206,509 in operating expenditures over. We are asking for far less. My recommendation is that council approves the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2122.
I'll second.
I have a motion to step forward. Any discussion?
Yes. So, I kind of just want to start by saying that emotions are high tonight, and I understand that, and I think that's across the board, it's in the departments, it's in citizens, and I get it. And everybody cares, everybody cares that much that our emotions are that high, so it's appreciated. And so do we. We have worked many tireless hours, the department heads have done the same, and I know the citizens have done the same. So we all care, we're all headed in the same direction, we all want the same thing. We want the best for our community, we want the best services without having to have our taxes increased. I think with this budget, as it sits, that that can be accomplished. I think going any lower on the budget is going to affect services. I have looked over every single line of every single department and checked all of the things that are being purchased and have been purchased and are in the budget. And I don't know if everybody has had the opportunity to do that, but I have. And in order to operate, we have to have funds to do so. We cannot do what we're doing without it. And as a council, our opinion may differ from some people's opinions. It may not, we may be on track, but some people's opinions are. But for me personally, I think that we have to find a solution. I agree that there is, there are things that need to continue to be worked on. I agree, you know, having an independent consultant come in and look at our EMS and ambulance service, if nothing else, because it's a new department and we're learning. Our fire department and ambulance is doing a phenomenal job, and there has been a ton of work put in, and it is very, very appreciated. I know I have sat and grilled them, and I have had nothing but help and willingness to take any suggestions into consideration. But, you know, I think we still need to keep working on it again, because it's a new department, but without this budget passing the way it is, it will affect our services. And I think that if this budget does pass the way it is laid out at this point, we've literally gone from a deficit of, what, a million dollars?
1,540,000.
Yes, and now we're at 331,000. We have come a long way, but at some point, it does start to affect the departments, and I think that's where we are now, so.
I have some concerns, and I agree with the citizens. I think we should be having conversations involving the town manager, some of the council, informing new citizens, just to explore and talk about this ambulance service. Because I do believe that per capita is a little hot. Are there things that we can do? I don't know. But if we had the conversations and the citizens were involved and saw that we're doing the best that we can, that would take a lot of room, so anyway. And it's just, it's just simple conversations, real simple. But my concern with this budget is you're relying heavily on one-time money, and I'm looking at $737,155,000. That's not going to be there next year, most likely. And then we're going to have to come up with that if we continue as we're going. We can't do that. It's too much. You're going to add maybe another $800,000, maybe a million dollars to the budget next year. And that's going to hit the taxpayer real hard. They're upset already.
I don't, I don't know what to suggest at this time. But the funding is not going to work. It says, we're going to rely on that money, and that money's going to, it's going to pay the bills this year, and it won't be there next year. So you're going to have to dig deeper in people's pockets or make cuts. Nobody wants cuts. We don't want to lose our ambulance service. Can we fine tune it? I don't know. Can we have conversations? Yes, we can.
If I may, last year, it was a big decision for EMS. Day after day, we had people come to us with their input, and we listened. And I can say, out of everybody that got involved, we got to look out for the best of the interest as a majority. And I can say probably seventy-five percent of the people, I'm not saying seventy-five percent of the taxpayer in our community, but I'm going to say seventy-five percent of all the people that came to me that had any discussion on the ambulance and EMS was, was for it. I can honestly say twenty-five percent was making it. As holding a chair in a town council, you, you, you do the best you can do for the decision that we give from you people, because we're here to serve you people. And after a certain amount of time and discussion from input from all sides and what we knew and, and been educated on it. We voted for the best of the community, which was to give an ambulance service and EMS, knowing that it wasn't going to be easy. You know, it, it's hard to sit here even tonight and judge the articles, all the input that they've had, all the financials that they've gained, lost, put together by number in one year. And, and I have looked over the numbers, and I think they, it's been a miracle, it's been a miracle that you took this EMS in the fire department and put it where it is today. I, I at one time had my doubts, and it's not over, it's not over by nothing, so I think, I think there's, there's room. I would like to have this conversation three years from now, and, and we'll all feel better about that person, figures, and where we stand. I know looking after the best interest for the community, it's my job to give majority of the community what, what they want, under the circumstances that we can afford. And we know this is going to come to this, so I, I have no doubt it's a new business, starting out with a new business. Everybody's going to get numbers at certain parts of the months to that year that you may not like, but you've got revenue that's counting on. I think the revenue will straighten out more as, as this provides the services. I've looked at all the numbers, and I see the increase that we're looking at, and if you circle it, there's where your number is. But looking at where we started and where we're at, as a council, I would provide, if necessary, like Melissa said, that if we could have a committee, that we could work with the town manager and EMS to work the numbers, to see our options. There's a lot of smart people out there, there is. Give, give a lot of people a lot of credit for the amount of work they put in this. Come next year, the information that's gathered, the corrections that we can make as a community, it makes our shoulders lighter. I think we can take this and, and make it work. Because I was born and raised in Fort Fearfield. We're not quivers. If the times get hard, we tighten our belts and roll our sleeves up, and, and we can prevail, and we've come this far, we've come this far. And I think the, the distance to travel from here will get easier with the support of people that's willing to work with the committee, town manager, and that's, I think there's much ground to gain. We got to give it a little better chance than one year. That's, that's my feeling. And, and hopefully the numbers will make more sense, we can get some, uh, educated between both parties and, and see what we can do with this. Thank you.
I'll be brief, but I do want to share again a thank you to everybody that did all and helped it crunch the numbers and was holding the call for them during the months, and that we know that it's been a difficult journey. One thing I do want to share is that we can move forward from this, and it's, you know, the EMS seems to be the, the main one that we're focused on, but we're moving forward. We've established the plan, we're moving forward with it, and at the same time, it's costing us some money to do that. It's a service that we need, it's not a walk, we need the service. And again, looking a year, as Bob mentioned, three years from now, having conversation, we can tweak, it's, it's like anytime we've made decisions personally, in our personal lives, sometimes we say, well, maybe I should have done things different. Whether it's a business adventure, even if it's a personal adventure, but we learn, we move forward, and so it affects everybody, the whole community, and as Bob mentioned, I've been talking to people also who recognize the need, and they recognize also that if we can work at cutting costs but at the same time still providing the need or the service that we have. And that's what I look at today, and again, a big thank you to all that have, you know, put in a lot of, a lot of hours in this, and we appreciate your feedback. I will say thank you to Sharon, your words were not on our notice, and it's given us stuff to look at that we can tweak. And we may not have gone line for line, but it's given us the information we need or some information to be able to work at it, and so we've cut back a lot, and, and I'm sure that in the years to come, we'll continue to move forward, and that's, that's the thing, we move forward, we don't get stuck there. And I think we're, I think we may be forgetting one thing is that things change. We mentioned the one-time money or whatever, but yet things change. What will happen between now and next year? What could happen positively for the community of Fort Fearfield? We don't know that, we're not judging from this circumstance or where we're at right now. Well, we've all seen things have changed overnight sometimes, or in the months we're planning, and whether it's businesses coming in or new endeavors, but it's positive, we have to look at that. Instead of getting stuck in a negative, we look at what will, for the future to be better, and that's maybe part of my nature, I always look at the good, I always look for the good to happen and look for the positive, and even though this is a major decision, the cost will not fall on one person. The burden will fall on the community, and I'm a part of the community, I've been a part of this community for thirty-some odd years, and I, I know, you know, sometimes things not always been pretty, but we move forward. And as if the community that it once was, no, but we can change the community, and it starts with the citizens working together, and doing what we can to make things move forward, so let's move on to the citizens. I just, I know something I feel, I've been an emergency back person most of my life. I see people that, who has to take their hot, their hospital or, or, or child or something to the hospital because they can't wait for an ambulance service to show up. I had my grandson, when he was three years old, had to wait twenty minutes for him to see you, because the ambulance running around. This is why, look, I look at my past experience. I, I understand with the taxes and stuff like that, and I've been in tax also. And when I see the people that are needing a service, when the ambulance service pulled out here, I think we did the, the, the community a service by adding the EMT paramedics and firefighters, but combined it together, because you got two services out of one. Now, when I was, before we even went to the firefight EMS, I talked to the former chief, fire chief, and he was at a death scene, and he had to tell him he needed assistance, four times it was told him before he, he got a response. Now, if he's sitting down here in the fire station by himself, at the time, by himself, he couldn't go to a fire. I could call the fire at my house, and he'd be sitting down here waiting for somebody to come in, or waiting for somebody to come to Prescott, I kill. I don't live in Prescott, and I don't respect services in Prescott, I, I'm all for mutual aid, I mutual aid when I was a police force, I've, I've helped many of the police departments. But I think we owe the citizens and the citizens of the town of Fort Fearfield some type of service, where if they get in an accident or they, or need a fire, a fire department, they're simply going to be here in four or five minutes. Not ten, fifteen minutes, or not at their leisure, and, and that's, that's where I, I put my, my feelings for, is the citizens of, of Fort Fearfield. I've been a resident most of my life, since a few years I was in the military, but I've lived in Fort Fearfield and I love Fort Fearfield, and I look out for the citizens of Fort Fearfield. Thank you. If you're in discussion, I'll, I'll call for a vote. Bob.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Mark. I also vote aye.
Thank you. I believe we have an executive session.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session, MRS A four oh five six eight.